Welcome to the October 26, 2020, Twolton City Council Work Session. Tonight, we have about four items on the agenda, starting off with our Home, Our Health event recap.
Excellent. I'm going to do the screen share and then Karen and I'll take the presentation.
And this is Garrett. What a Macintosh.
All right, go ahead, Karen.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. We're pleased to be here to present a recap on the event and public meeting for our Home, Our Health, which was held on September 30, 2020. My name is Karen Pearl Fox, Senior Planner for the City and Project Manager and Moderator for this event.
And I'm Garrett Pryor, Policy Analyst. I worked with Karen on the Communications Engagement piece for the event. So our first main goal was to build off the relationships we had in Twolton 2040 in the previous year's event with the Diversity Task Force, and really using their guidance to make sure that this event was an inclusive space to talk about some issues that can be really tough that people are struggling with.
Our goal was also to meet the state requirements for the severely rent burdened. And we even went beyond that to incorporate the critical connection between housing and health, a connection which has long existed, but become even more visible during COVID.
So in 2020, you've noticed there's a lot of things going on and getting people to attend a webinar in the evening was a difficult task. But it's one that we had close to 40 people attend, and which I think is a real success. And really, that's born out of months of coordination with the Diversity Task Force members. This was one of the first time the city has hired a community consultant, so somebody from the Diversity Task Force, to be there with our staff meetings, informing and providing that lens and input into the project sort of months ahead of time. We tried the banner board, postcards, emails, Twolton Life, a pretty much the entire network of different resources there. And we'll continue to, after we have, you're going to see a snippet of this interview here in a few minutes, we'll continue to kind of further that that network throughout Twolton. As you can see on the screen, we had a very diverse arrange of speakers, array of speakers. We had the wonderful Councilor Reyes kick us off, Bandana Schrezer from the ARP of Oregon, she's their Engagement Director. Two of our Diversity Task Force members, Bron Aguilar, Afrika Ramirez, Nayobi Lopez. Community Action, a wonderful Community Development Director by the name of Aquila Hurd Ravich was there to answer questions from the city, as well as Betsy Rodriguez and Armando Gutierrez provided our interpretation.
As you can see from this exciting picture, we had a diverse group of women speakers and panelists. And so let's take a moment to hear from them a few short video clips straight from the event.
Karen, can you mute your mic, please?
Yes. Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Veronica Aguilar. I identify myself as a Black Latina, married, mother of three. I am a 26-year resident of the Twolton Tigard area. I am an educator employed by this great district of Tigard, Twolton. And as a lot of people know, I am a very active community member, part of the Twolton Diversity Task Force.
Hi, my name is Afrika Nayobi Ramirez Lopez. I love the city of Twolton and have been a resident here for over 25 years. I have worked in this school district in various different roles for over 18 years. And I also have worked as a medical interpreter for 14 years, as well as other jobs serving and supporting the community. In the last few years, it has become necessary for me to work at three different jobs in order for my family to continue living within the Twolton city limits. I felt this was important to keep my family connected to the community and the excellent school district we have found here. In order for me and my family to live in the city of Twolton, it has required me to have multiple jobs. I needed to supplement my primary job with other employment since the cost of living far exceeded my income. Not only was it difficult to overcome the cultural barriers of being a Latina woman, I also had added responsibility to maintain a home as a single parent. These were not easy things to do, but I kept working, looking for opportunities and mentors until I could proudly say that I was able to provide for my three children, each one now a college student who went through the Tiger Twolton School District and graduated from Twolton High School.
Me being in these apartment complexes, being on these premises allowed me to have a very raw, heartfelt communication face-to-face with a lot of our residents. And I got very emotional to see the sadly poor, I cry, low-income, high-rent apartment complexes that a lot of my own families that I have as an educator have known for years and seen their living arrangements affecting them not only with their health, not having the option to move out of these apartment complexes, having to deal with very poor windows that brought in mold in some of these buildings, having to see children living with the fear of not having a meal on their table because their parents had to decide whether they should be paying the rent or should they be providing a meal for their children.
This is a really hard question, but what I think is some barriers or impediments are the lack of high-paying jobs in the area, funding to help with rental assistance, especially now with COVID, equity lost to support affordable housing, availability of affordable homes. Without programs to help with funding affordable housing programs, our community cannot help individuals who need this kind of benefits. Those are my thoughts. I know that.
Making it a program where it's flexibility of being eligible, being more flexible because of their undocumented, and also that middle class that they don't make too much. They make too much or they make too little and that are in the same, you know. There's a lot of seasonal jobs out there that people are having to take and having to take the jobs and you don't qualify or you're not, you don't qualify for food stamps, but then you don't qualify for assistance either. So and you still cannot make.
I do believe that establishing rental assistance programs, not just on the national level, but locally in Twolton can help to ease the financial burden. Support new development of affordable housing units or within existing units. Local supportive services can provide assistance to families and identifying ways to stabilize their social, emotional, economical situation and to how to thrive in this challenging times. Support groups can also be established, which can share resources that can help with financial assistance and other problems associated with how to live in the community with every increase in costs. And perhaps there could be some form of legislation which could encourage rent control to keep costs down and maintain diversity in the community. When we eliminate those who are priced out of a neighborhood, we eliminate their diversity, which makes us more vibrant community.
So. This, and then let me get back to our presentation. Right, so I'll quickly go through kind of who showed up and then we'll wrap up with some of the main points. So we polled the people who attended. As you can see, their high majority of them lived in Twolton. We had a kind of about a third to two-thirds, two-thirds being owners, about a third being renters of those who attended. The topic of affordable housing was the most popular topic of why people came there, down to people who just love government meetings. That was also on the table. The cost of housing makes it hard to get into or stay in housing that is affordable. What struck me here was that everybody was at the agree level or higher, really. You know, we had one vote at neutral, but really that that issue was felt throughout the audience, whether they were homeowners or renters. And the same thing, people really understood the, to a very strong degree, that your health and life very much plays into the quality of your housing and that connection between the two. And this was just a nice cap on the night to see that Twolton was still the favorite, Wakanda in second place for the favorite city of the group. Karen, I think I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So we heard from a very dynamic keynote speaker, Bandana Schrezer, ARP's Community Engagement Person for the State of Oregon. And she relayed the message that secure, stable, and affordable housing is fundamental to our well-being, regardless of age, ability, race, income, and family size. She particularly emphasized that housing affordability and stability, housing quality and design, and location of housing are key determinants of health. She underscored particularly that housing is the linchpin to our overall health and well-being. While I could go on and on about this subject, I want to leave you with that message. There's a lot underneath that in terms of the details. But it's basically saying housing is our key to maintaining our health. That was followed by some very powerful story sharing, some of which you just heard in those clips from Afrika and Veronica. I feel like we were privileged to hear from each of them directly, particularly about the rising cost of housing coupled with low or even moderate incomes, making it harder for long-term residents in Twolton to stay in Twolton. Renters, particularly in historically underrepresented groups, including people of color, often need to hold multiple jobs to make ends meet. Many people are having to choose between paying rent or food for their families, and children are the hardest hit. Garrett?
Yep. And so you've watched the videos on some of the feedback to barriers and solutions. But, you know, some of this work builds off of what you're about to hear from after us in the Twolton 2040 process on those longer-term solutions and barriers. But some of the key highlights that were really brought out that we heard at this event was the folks who fall into that gap. So they're not able to access the immediate resources through like a community action because they make just enough money or, you know, the circumstances aren't right. But they're not being picked up yet by some of the longer-term housing solutions that we're working on. And so there's this little, this middle ground where it makes it hard to be. And that's where really people feel like that, at least we heard from some of those speakers, that that could be a place where the city might be able to step into. But one that the city wants to do with partnership because of that, you know, the fear of government or in past history of not being invited into the conversation. And the same thing you heard there with some of the solutions on kind of that filling in the gap, but also doubling down on some things that are in addition to kind of incentives or handouts might be more immediate term housing needs with the rental assistance control or some of the affordable housing, kind of trying to get that more fast-tracked to meet kind of current needs.
So we had, we actually had two Q and A's. One was on barriers and solutions. This is the second one, which was on wide-open questions and answers about any of the topics that were raised. And by the way, those topics, the housing connection with health and the severe rent burden are very much sort of interwoven. And that's why we, there was a kind of intersectionality, if you will, between those two because one affects the other and they're sort of tied in. What we heard was that homeownership is a desire, but finding it is almost impossible for those in the severe rent burdened category. And while we, will we ever see affordable rents in the long run or is homeownership the long-term solution? That was a key question that was asked and various responders grappled with, and it's a difficult question to ask, to answer. Residents want to be assured that the city is not just checking a box when it comes to housing. And so we, in this event, we went out of our way to make sure that we provide feedback and that we provide ways for people to stay involved and stay connected in the ongoing process. We close with some key segments. One was from Catherine Gallian from Community Action. Community Action has a host of forms of assistance. You do have to income qualify. Not everybody qualifies for these, but many do. They actually, I talked to Catherine recently and she said 56 people from Twolton had recently or in the last year taken advantage of their services. So this includes things like emergency food assistance, rent assistance, utility assistance, eviction, and more. There are also opportunities for the city to partner with Community Action, and that's an interesting topic and has some potential. Aquila then talked about, gave an overview of the city's long-term housing work and what's in the works to come, which are completing the Twolton 2040 implementation, the code amendments that will follow, and the housing production strategy, which currently is underway. In addition to a Washington County Home Services survey that we sent out from Anita Yap in Washington County, we laid out three key ways that people can continue to be involved. One is joining the Diversity Task Force. Another is contacting your Twolton City Council and speaking up at public, giving public comment and attending public events. Sorry, connect with the staff directly to receive notifications on Twolton 2040 implementation. And I think we'll continue to find ways and add ways to those. But we wanted to make sure people knew a next couple of steps that they could take. With that, I think we're open to questions or comments from any of the council or mayor.
Thanks, Karen and Garrett. Questions? Let me see if everybody's picture pop back up. Valerie?
I just wanted to comment that I attended this and I was just amazed at the speakers and how much they cared. And the fact that some of them are on the Diversity Task Force when they're working multiple jobs and raising children. It just, I'm so glad that they take the time to do that for a community and it was really eye-opening for me. So I really, I thought you did a great job, Karen, by the way, moderating it. I'm not sure why Wakanda has to do anything with Twolton, but that's another story. But I really appreciate it and it was, it was really informative. So thank you.
Bridget?
I also attended and found it very interesting. I thought some of the health statistics about our community were interesting. And you know, I think there was a longevity one that stuck out. And I also, you know, there's a couple of points that you bring up that I think are really important to sort of reiterate. First of all, I think that, like Valerie said, all of the testimony and narrative sharing was really touching and really courageous for people to come, not only because they're busy, but also it's a sensitive topic. And I thought the way that the city answered a lot of complex questions on the fly was super helpful and attentive. If there wasn't something they could answer, you guys could answer, there'd be a way to get back to them. And then I also want to say thank you for including the survey, the housing survey. That's part of the planning group that we're doing for Washington County for the Metro Housing Grant. So that survey is really important for as many people in our area to get ahold of and to answer. We really want that data and especially for our area. Finally, just some things as a social worker, I think that the health home overlap is so important. What makes a social worker, social worker is its person and environment. So we look at those items. A lot of people think if you're homeless, you had mental health issues. But we know that someone is homeless for 30 days and then they can start exhibiting mental health issues. So one and the other can be very intricately connected. The other thing I think we have sometimes is a bias towards people that are lower income. And there's that old idea that people are lazy somehow when people in these income brackets are some of the hardest working people in our communities, working so many jobs, raising kids, being members of the community as we see, being members of their families, being members of society in general. So I just think it's really important to bust myths like that and to be really aware. And I really appreciate the way that this conversation was handled. I hope we have more. And I have two questions. One is, I'd like to hear more about how our city might be able to work with Community Action Network. And the second is, I would like, with my work with PAB and Lit in the Implementation Planning Committee, any opportunities to hear from constituents, especially with the Diversity Task Force. I'm, I would be very interested in that and and hope that we can do something like that in the future. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Did you guys have any answer for my question?
Oh, I can answer. Yeah, I can try to answer anyone. So I've been in contact with Community Action, so I can answer that part of your question. There's some very significant new money that's come in for rental assistance. Some of it goes to OHSU and some of it goes to Community Action. And Community Action actually pools many, many sources for their rental assistance. And the recent new money is actually more targeted for the 0% to 30% MFI range. However, many of their other sources go the full range, up to 80% median family income. And they, and they pool funds anyway, so it's, they do the mixing and the matching and the interviews with individual people and make that determination. We have an opportunity, if we want to take that opportunity to partner with them on both this new money, which will be coupled with the old money, and play a role. And that could be really getting the word out because one of the things that we heard in this event and even afterwards in some discussions is that people just don't know where to turn. Those that are undocumented are terribly fearful of turning anywhere. And so we don't know, they don't know if it's safe to go somewhere. So often they don't to ask for anything. So I think in having a close partnership and working with an agency that's just extremely well-regarded. I've known them myself for many, 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 many years and they're great to work with. So that's just one example where we could partner, where we get out and talk to people and let them know how they get to those funds. And then the agency itself does the detailed work of determining eligibility and has the funds. So that's one idea. There's a variety of ideas, but I wanted to put that out since I've had recent conversations to find out what can we do. So that's one possibility if we, if we choose to do it.
Does that answer your question, Bridget?
Yes, it does. And I think that, I think here will keep me in mind around interfacing a little bit more closely. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments? I just got two quick ones if other folks don't have their hands up. Like Karen just mentioned, Community Action, it's a political organization here in Washington County that, yeah, a lot of people don't know about it. We better, you know, we should probably better publicize it. I know police officers know what Community Action is. It has the phone numbers for them. But a lot of folks don't interface with the police department, but they need help and assistance. And Community Action is the central intake for a lot of agencies in Wash County that depending what you need, if Community Action can't provide that service, they link that person up with that agency that can support them. And I got to remember back to my Community Development Block grant days, isn't, is it 511? What's the three-digit code that gets you to like Community Action? Is it 511, Garrett?
211.
311? Yeah. 311, right? Yeah, so if someone, you know, dials into their phone 311, that connects you to someone, usually a Community Action that can provide you with some guidance and assistance, anywhere from utility to rental assistance to you having a dispute with your landlord. There's all kinds of resources. Community Action has at their fingertips. So I think Maria, it's a 211? Let's clarify this. All right, 211. Thanks, Maria. So it's 211. That's, can help you out if you're having any kind of issues. Second thing is maybe getting Community Action's phone number and contact info on the city's website. I know we do have it up there for COVID-related things right now. The second thing I want to mention is you guys may drove the point home is that housing stability is a root, is that rock that everyone needs to have. Everywhere, you know, if you need to, your kids are only going to succeed at school if you have stable housing. You only have stable employment if you have stable housing. So if you don't have stable housing, it's very difficult to function and to be successful in our community or anywhere around us. Because if you don't have a safe place to go to home at night and feel at ease, then you're going to be on pins and needles all the time. You'll have, you know, food insecurity, medical insecurity. Your kids will also feel the nervousness at home, so they will be worried and don't do well at school. I'm not doing this justice, but it's been beating to my head and I totally agree with it from all the years I've done stuff with Washington County Community and Children and Family. Housing, meeting someone's basic housing needs is that basic thing in the old days, the Maslow's, you know, the pyramid of needs. If you don't have a housing, you can't build upon any further. So and the city is very, we're not checking a box. I know every counselor is passionate and committed to trying to fix some of these issues with housing instability, the housing affordability in Twolton. And I look forward to keep on working on this and hearing from the 2040 folks on how we can make things a little bit more easy here in Twolton for folks that aren't at the highest income levels, that we do have the diverse committee we all desire. Anything else? All right. Well, thanks, Karen and Garrett.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
So moving on to our next agenda item. Bringing that up is Twolton 2040 implementation. Is this Steve?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Steve Cooper. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city councilors. So that was a great presentation recap from my colleagues on actions that the city is taking right now to look at the housing issue, of course. And I'm just going to share a screen and get into my presentation, which is going to look at housing from the other side. Housing from the other side, other side of the coin, so we had, we heard about the um some of the immediate needs of those in our community um on housing. But of course, like the mayor mentioned, uh the city council has um in general a commitment to addressing the housing issue. And so that started with twelve and twenty forty. Um and so I'm here to provide an update on the work that we're doing in the twelve and twenty forty implementation. Uh we were last here with you uh in late July and so we've been. Um our staff and our Twelton Planning Commission has been busy working away on the implementation work and so we're just here to provide you with an update. Um so we'll give you where where we've been, um which will be familiar with our timeline, um we'll just touch back on some of the comprehensive plan basics. Um we'll delve into the housing update portion of the comp plan update. We'll briefly touch on some of the other updates that we've been able to um accomplish at the same time as the housing update. Just again, provide you an overview of some of the community input opportunities, which um owing to the COVID. Um situation have shifted a little bit from um some of our previous presentations and then we'll provide a Q and A and opportunity for um any feedback. So this graphic, of course, hopefully looks familiar to y'all by now, um in some ways, the seeds of twelve and twenty forty were planted by the. Uh twelve and tomorrow visioning, which was last completed in twenty fourteen, our code update in twenty eighteen. And then out of that code update and some of the visioning work or the council's direction on the emerging issues of housing, leading to our housing needs analysis. As well as our economic opportunities analysis. And then out of that process came a prioritization of policy issues around housing in the economy. Um starting towards the end of twenty nineteen and then into twenty twenty, we've been working as staff again with the planning commission. On implementation and so that is updating our comprehensive plan to have a new and and improved housing element. Um we also will be adopting the um. Uh housing needs analysis into the comp plan formally. And then, as I mentioned, um some low hanging fruit due to the hard work of our staff um enabled us to do. A light graphics update and then a slight reorganization of the comp plan. Um to in a policy neutral way, make it a little bit easier to read. Similarly, hopefully this this timeline is also familiar, as you can see, um those you may recall from July, our blue box highlighting where we are was further up on the timeline. So now we're we're moving away, we're almost done with the housing element update. And we're even getting into some of the other parts of the twelve and twenty forty implementation, which will. Return on a separate um work session and provide some updates on that work as well, but um suffice it to say. Even once we complete this work, we'll continue on with the twelve and twenty forty implementation, so that would be. Um updates to our development code to implement the comprehensive plan as well as meet the state mandated requirements of House Bill two thousand and one. And then also um. We will be doing what's called the housing production strategy and again, I'll I'll return with a other presentation to provide a little more information about that. But suffice it to say, it's a document that will hopefully look at some of the gaps between the presentation you heard earlier in terms of what are the immediate housing needs? And then what are things um Twelton can do to um help actually. Get some of the um desired types of housing in the middle and affordable housing actually built in Twelton and not just allowed in the development code. Um so again, just a basic on the comp plan um overview, the comprehensive plan is, as it says, a comprehensive document uh that. Is a umbrella document for all activities in the city um related to land use. And the future of natural and manmade systems and services, so land use, the environment, um utilities and so forth. Um probably most importantly to the housing element in in general to the topic at hand tonight. The comp plan helps manage how uh Twelton grows through a set of goals, policies and implementation measures. So in other words, we take that vision from twelve and tomorrow from twenty fourteen. The policy prioritization work that was done as part of the initial parts of the twelve and twenty forty. And then also we've um gotten input and feedback from the planning commission, which is the um. Standing citizen committee providing input on land use matters to the council. Um on how uh to best take the work that's been done so far and weave it into the comp plan. And so I've alluded to it already a little bit, but why are we updating it? Um we're providing a housing chapter, which has been missing a standalone housing chapter, something not in the comp plan previously. That also provides an updated vision of um where the council and the community sees. Uh the future of housing in Twelton, so obviously we saw in our previous presentation, there's some immediate housing needs. But I think it's obviously also very clear to everyone on the council, planning commission, community, that if we don't plan for. The future, then we'll obviously not have the outcomes that we desired in addition. So certainly we have to do steps to address um the crises that are ongoing, but we also have to um address it from this side of the coin as well. And so here is an example of um where the housing strategy that was completed and accepted by council in twenty nineteen. Um has been fleshed out a little bit more, thanks to our planning commission and um we've taken some of the basics. Uh from the housing strategy, so I think the council has articulated this probably on a number of occasions by now, but. A desire to encourage a wider variety of housing types, we heard that from the community too. And so we have a little bit more of a um expanded idea of what that looks like. So development and preservation of housing that is affordable for all households households in Twelton. Um and then, so that's an overall strategy that turned into a goal and then a policy which nests below the goal. So the goal is the overarching goal and then policy or policies that help implement it. And then the policies themselves are implemented through the development code. And so uh the previous action was to allow some of the middle housing types duplexes, townhomes, et cetera. In lower density residential zones and so that has um again, through the work of the planning commission. Um been updated a little bit for Twelton and so supporting the development of townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottages. Um and so forth, and then one that I think that the planning commission uh felt was important based on previous feedback from the council is to specifically call out senior housing as part of that. Um mix and then just other kinds of potentially um. Uh unique but necessary housing types like um multi generational housing. And so again, the specifics of how that policy would be implemented uh would be further refined through the development code. And particularly, as you can see in some of that policy, it um connects with the types of housing that will be required in low density residential zones. By House Bill two thousand and one. Um the graphics update is um has, a- as you can see in your packet, has progressed um further from when you saw a similar slide to this one in July. And so um we're really proud of the work um Aaron Engman has been able to do with the graphics. And move from again, a fairly um basic form of information presentation to something that I think is really in contrast, exciting. Um and so we're we're very proud of that work and we hope you are too. Um another example of how, and you'll also find that in the attachment, but just how the um plain text is transitioning into. Um more interesting text with a a call out, highlight. Um stressing some of the important objectives, for example, in this chapter and then providing just a single fairly simple graphic um to. Generate reader interest. Another example in the comprehensive plan reorg and uh credit to Tabitha Bocetti, who's here with me this evening. Um. Uh just some work to while we're updating the comp plan, um take some of the pieces of it that were. Overly wordy and really complex and distill them into simpler ideas, so maintaining the um. The policy, so taking a policy neutral approach to the um. Update, but then um making it simpler and easier to understand. And so I think that I selected this example in particular, just on the heels of our um. Our plan text amendment, where I think that, you know, to some degree, having a little bit more of a clearly articulated comp plan. Um goal would have better supported the um. The open space carve out that was part of that amendment and I think would also um this updated policy. Um would better support that type of thing in the future and so I think that's just a great example of an area in which not changing the policy, but just. Um changing the wording to make the intent of it a little bit more clear um is a really powerful change. And again, this is something that is um. Low hanging fruit that we're able to do without um. Without a lot of additional work and so we're again pleased to be able to present this to you. So as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, um due to COVID, um and the fact that not a lot of other groups such as um CIOs. Have been meeting during COVID, um we expanded the planning commission meeting schedule a little bit so as to provide ample opportunities for the public to attend. And provide input um as well as continuing to update the uh twelve and twenty forty portion of the city's website. So in August, we had our first um review of the housing chapter with the Twelton Planning Commission. And then um we introduced the updated comp plan organization. Structure and then some of the formatting, we at that meeting, based on input from the planning commission, made further changes to the housing chapter. And so obviously with this being a housing element update emphasis um. Over the course of the several meetings, including the last meeting um that we just had on October fifteenth, we've been continually making. Um slight changes to the housing element itself, um and then just some other other changes as the planning commission has an opportunity to look at them. And of course, suggestions on the organization and some of the graphics pieces. And so where that brings us. Is that um and the reason for coming to you, council, for this work session is just to um bring this project and the work that the planning commission has been doing back onto your radar. Because on um November nineteenth, the planning commission will re- review the final draft um comp plan. Housing element update and then they'll make a recommendation on that update to you as council and then. On December seventh, um there'll be a public hearing at which the council have an opportunity to adopt that work that the planning commission has done. And so um. Like I said, we provided the um most recent version of the um. Housing element draft in your packet, we provided some of the um graphics work as well as the overall structure of the um. Revised chapters, um not too much detail, so as not to overwhelm, hopefully. And with that, I'm gonna stop screen sharing. And I can go back to the presentation if there's questions on individual slides, but really again, we're just here to, again, like I said, bring this. Project and the work the planning kit commission has been doing back on your radar, um see if you have any initial feedback that you would like. Us to relate to the planning commission when we go back to them in November, um and hopefully you'll find. That you like what the work the planning commission and our staff has done and um hope that it's something that you'd be able to approve in December. And with that, I'll stop.
Right, Steve, thanks.
Thank you.
Questions, comments for Steve? Bridgette?
I just have a quick comment, um thank you very much for the presentation, Steve, and um. When I uh think about user friendliness of documents and how people comprehend things. Especially these days, I think that um having it simplified and easy to understand is really helpful. Um and I also just want to thank the people on the planning commission for all the hard work. I think that to volunteer in our community and dedicate um time and energy to make. Um the goals easier to understand and easier to implement um and our ability to interface and work with. People utilizing their plans, so those volunteer efforts are um, that's a lot of work. So I just uh, I just wanna tip of the hat to our just amazing volunteers in our community. And every time I hear more, I'm always um impressed, so thanks for your leadership, Steve, and thanks for the information. I'm looking forward to looking through in a more comprehensive way as things move forward.
Thank you, I'll be sure to relay that feedback, thanks so much.
Other questions or comments for Steve? My group tonight, geez, okay, um. You you alluded to it, Steve, I look forward to seeing the updates because of what we just went through. Uh with the PTA down at Passau Creek area, where we all knew where we wanted to be. Now, we're not quite there yet and having the vision and the comprehensive plan to be laid out and what how we want our community to look like in the future. And dress all the current requirements and needs of the community which are lacking right now. Uh to have that encapsulated in the comprehensive plan, I think is invaluable, that we can set our. Um stake in the ground and say this is the kind of developments we're gonna have in Twelton, these are the things you need to do in order to get them approved. And these are the types of housing that we're looking for and different uh. Pricing levels, if you will, and amenities and parks and trees. I really look forward to seeing this so that, you know, we can get this implemented in the next year or two. And uh have a lot more control over our future than we have right now. Other.
Thank you.
Comments? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
All right, move on to our next item on the agenda, our parks condition assessment and funding discussion. So we need that's uh Ross, there he is, and there's Rich, and I see Beth is also here, Beth Dittman, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bibic, and thank you, councilors, appreciate uh time today. Um wanted to continue our conversation about parks funding and parks amenities and assets in our community. Uh as we have uh just kind of a quick overview, when we, when we started this conversation, really, really born out of. Born out of the Parks Master Plan work. And um and so uh had a conversation, I think, starting last January at the council advance. Um about about what the master plan says and the need for sort of this work, this work of looking comprehensively at the parks assets and amenities throughout the park system. As we know, they are, they are aging and and uh so so really just appreciate the continued uh conversations and presentations and opportunity to. Uh provide updates as we continue to gather more data and information for you. Um so city councilors, we've also continued updates and conversations with the with T Park Committee and so thank you, Beth Dittman. Uh who's on the on the meeting tonight uh in T Park's involvement, engagement and and much time spent on this topic to uh to get to this point. So thank you, so yeah, let's continue to uh we we've got tonight some a recap of past information, but also some a substantial amount of new information tonight. And data uh to help to help you. So first of all, uh you've seen this slide, this is the uh system in a snapshot. This is the the table, the chart that you've seen, the seven hundred and thirty nine assets that city staff have scored over the past year or so. Um the ones, of course, being like new or brand new, perfect condition. The ones, of course, being like new or brand new, perfect condition, in fantastic shape. Those fives are are those that are end of their life cycle. Some of our some are considered a safety hazard. Some are considered not accessible. And then everything in between, you can see sort of where the breakdown is in our system. This is the state, the current state of our assets and amenities within our our park system. And so the fives. These are things that include the 12 and Community Boat Ramp, a boat ramp that has served us well for many, many years. Is at the end of its end of its useful life and really needs investment and is is a five is one of those urgent need items. 12 and Commons Plaza surface, you can see in that image. The surface is is aging. It's it's approaching 30, 25, 30 years. Stone Ridge Park is another example. You can see the the fence at Stone Ridge Park and the state that that's in, the pathways and the state that those are in. So really, really some good examples of things throughout our system that that are either urgent need or or relatively urgent need are those fours and fives total for fives is around 9.6 million. So those assets in our system that really need attention. These range in scale from small scale to large scale projects. Some of these are park benches that are simply falling apart or a fence at a park that's falling apart. Some of these things are like the boat launch that is a significant investment of that we'll talk about exact approximate dollars later in the presentation. So those are the fives. And so Richard Mueller.
Thank you.
Planning and Development Manager is going to take take it from here.
Thank you. Good evening. Here are some examples of fours. The lower turf at a quality park is very wet during the winter and not usable. Easily into spring and fall. Chieftain Dakota path surface, you can see roots that have broken up and created accessibility issues and and, you know, pedestrian issues. Little Wood Rose Park stairs are in need of replacement. And there's an example of Little Wood Rose. The fours total just over $5 million. Again, some examples of wood trash can containers signage, some greenway stairs, I believe that's Psalm Creek. Some fencing along Sweet Pond. And this overlook to the left hand side is in overlook in Brown's Ferry Park. So $5 million just over for the fours. With the fours and fives together, the total is just under $15 million. And we also went and did work on cost estimating for the ones, twos, and threes. You can see the combined total of ones, twos, and threes at just under $20 million. And that, if we go back to that first slide, the ones, twos, and threes. Ones are 12%, twos 16%, threes 31%. So again, a good portion of our system 25 to 30 years old that's aging out. And as we take care of those fours and fives, those one, twos, and threes will be moving into those four, four and five slots. This, this is an example of some current projects we are we are working on. And so this last summer Jergens Playground Surface was redone, not the play equipment, just the surface. And a Fallady Sports Courts just finished the project on a quality sports courts. The basketball court, which is on the upper part of the park near the playground and what was a tennis court now is a foot footsall court identified in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that the Affolati neighborhood desired was footsall rather than tennis on the lower portion of the park. And so currently, we continue to move forward with with working on projects specifically fours and fives that have safety or accessibility issues. But the general fund, just based on the system aging out, does not have the resources needed to keep up with the aging park system.
Thank you, Rich. And and so, yeah, as Rich talked about the this the assets and amenities throughout the system are are now approaching that age. And you can see on that last image that large crack in the basketball court. It's the types of the types of things you see after 25, 30, 30 plus years in some cases. And so we are, we are working as hard as we can with with the funds that we have out of the general fund through our CIP process. And we will continue to do that. And we've made some fantastic improvements and and we'll continue to make those fantastic improvements. However, that that the dollar amount, the 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 large number of assets that are in that four and five range and the large dollar amount that some of those projects represent or need really, really can't be accomplished through the through the general fund. There are some significant investments that need to be made. And so there are the opportunity, the opportunity presents itself to look at some different funding options. How are how have other cities accomplished this? And what are those potential sources to consider and to look at? And so you we you've 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 seen these three previously, utility fee is one of those types of of funding sources for parks and and aging assets like you see in our system. And a levy or a bond. And so we'll walk through, we have a few few slides, we've added some numbers to the actual slides. But that's different than what's in your packet. And so we had intended to sort of verbally like you let you know what those figures are, but we wanted to bring put them into slides and and show you tonight. So a utility fee, what could a utility fee cover? So you you'll see on the left. On the left, these, these are actual projects that we have that we have accomplished through the operating budget in the past few years. And so you'll see the Jergens off leash bench, the Laffkey Smart Irrigation System, Stone Ridge Site Planning that's currently underway. It fell out a sport court resurface at about $88,000 and then Iback Playground at $275,000. And on that project, we actually were able to obtain state grant dollars. And so we doubled our funds in our investment in that project. So those types of projects, that scale of project is is really if you look at sort of the breakdown of these different utility fee rates and what that would produce on an annual basis. So fees, any utility fees would be added on as a as a as a fee on the water bill. So those dollars would be collected, placed into an account and then used used to to replace an aging park assets. And so at $2 a month would produce about 271,000 a year. At $5 a month, it would produce about 678,000 a year. And at $10 a month, it would produce 1.3 million per year. So that's a utility fee. There are some projects, however, that that really are at a scale that needs a different source. And and so here are some examples of those. In the image you see on your right is that's at Fallady Playground. That's the new playground that was replaced at a Fallady Park. So examples, high school, the high school field, the the football field, the athletic field at the high school needs to be replaced. That cart that carpet is going to need to be replaced. And the lights are very old. And so just that one project alone is about 750,000. Brownsbury Bridge Replacements are about 875. Commons Concrete Surface is about 1.5 million. And the Community Park Boat Launch is about two and a half million dollars. So those are the types, the scale that we're talking about that would that would probably need some type of a bond or levy mechanism. So here, here's an example. This is a at at 25 cents per thousand of assessed value could result in about 20 million over for up for a bond over 20 years. And so this, this really, this, this, the levy rate and the bond rate that you'll see, you'll see the asterisks down below. They could vary depending on market in bond timing. So wanted to just clarify that. But this is a an approximation that provides you with some information about at what at what amount we could expect with with a 25 cent bond per thousand. And then the levy, local option levy. So these are updated numbers. Don, thank you, Don, our our Finance Director. Using using very current assessed value numbers at 10 cents per thousand of assessed value. It would produce about 465,000 per year or total revenue. And at 25 cents per thousand would produce about 1.1 million in revenue. And these are all dollars that could be used for mechanisms that could be employed to replace the aging assets within the park system. So that the key difference between a bond and a levy, bond, first of all, a bond with is collected as needed. And and so essentially upfront. So that bond dollars, you have all of those dollars as needed for a particular project or projects. Whereas a levy, that that money is collected not upfront, the bonds aren't sold upfront, it's a levy. And so it's collected on a on an ongoing basis. And so you don't have this large sum of money upfront for some of those larger investments. So those are the key differences. But wanted to present those. And Don, if you have anything to add here to clarify specifics about these calculations that I may have missed?
No, I think you hit it on the they had the, you know, the the local option levies would be an annual amount that we would receive up to the the five or 10 years, depending on what we then go out and ask for. And in the bond side, you're right, it would get would get that money upfront. We would sell the bonds, have that capital funding in there to to start those projects right away. The the caveat that Ross mentioned at the beginning there is so the numbers that we presented there at a 25 cent per thousand could end up being a $20 million bond for over 20 years. But those were in November 2019 analysis. Depending on when we would go out to market, depending on what our assessed values looked at, like in rates. Obviously, right now, the rate environment has dropped significantly since that analysis was done. But that that is an estimate of what that would look like. And then depending on if we were to go to the market, the timing and the rate structure at that time.
Thank you, Don. And so and so these are just some of the mechanisms, updated assessed value and calculations for these different types of mechanisms. We we have certainly the operating, our general fund operating budget has been a source and it has it has been key to to what we've been able to accomplish. And that the assets that we have that are 25 to 30 years old, and some of them more than that. The reason that they're still functioning is because of a fantastic team of of maintenance workers in our city that have done everything they can to keep things running and keep things safe. And so just very appreciative. Our park system has served our community well for many decades and will continue to. And it's also at that point in a need of of investment to keep those benefits coming for our community members, our businesses, our our residents. And and keep this, keep our park system that we've developed over so many decades functioning and and safe. And so wanted to first ask if there are any questions and ask if we can clarify anything. And and ask for what specific direction City Council and Mayor as staff, do you have for us for for next steps?
Valerie.
I have two to start first. Oh, no, I'm going to get lost. Oh, on the items that are categorized, one, two, and three, like how in general, how long will it take the three category things to get to the four and five? Is it like five years, 10 years, just generally? You know, I'm giving you a big question there.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor Pratt. Rich, if you wouldn't mind going back to that slide with our chart. That first slide. So as you, as you look at this, so ones are are like new. Imagine those, you see that playground on the right of a Fallady Park, brand new. That that probably is not going to be needed to replace for for quite quite a few years, 20, 25, 30, maybe even longer. If it's well maintained. So those are the ones. So if you work back from that and 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 start to realize that, okay, so if that's 20, 30 years out, twos twos are maybe are maybe 15 to 20, threes are are fifth, you know, 10 to 10 to five, fours are are in that are in that five, five to seven range. And fives are really the urgent items. These are the items that we 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 have to repair, we have to fix in the next three, three or four years. And some of them may need to be closed. As you see the image on the left of that five, that's the bridge at at Brownsbury Park that is is currently closed. That those amenities that that propose a very clear danger to use will need to will need to close. And so that's the fives that are in that category, most urgent.
Okay, can you go back to the page with the levy numbers on it? One of the
The which page?
With the levy, the
Okay.
There we are. So on these, is this revenue an annual amount? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess my concern is that as we look at this, I mean, I think we have, this is my opinion here, but I think we have a big obligation to take care of these assets for our community and we need to somehow figure out how to get ahead of the maintenance. So our threes aren't becoming fives, or we could prolong the life as long as possible. That's all I have right now.
Okay. I gotta scroll up and down and see whether people's hands are up. Suck. You also have Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ross and Rich. A couple of other clarifying questions. I think the last time this was in front of council, you had identified a bucket of costs that that you didn't know what are those now built into these cost figures?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Kellak. Rich, if you want to talk about those a little bit in what we did following our past meeting.
Yes, the one to fives, we added a percent on for design and planning. So that's included in what you saw, the fives, the fours, and the ones through the through the threes. And that's what brought those costs up. Still included in the costs is not our building renovation. So our facilities or or building structures are not in there. Of course, our operating maintenance is not in there. We did not include natural resource restoration or natural resource maintenance. Some of our ADA costs that are associated with the projects in the ones through fives are included in this. But others, so ADA costs and greenways, things like that are not necessarily included in these cost projections or cost estimates. Utility infrastructure renovation or replacements are not. So when we have an irrigation project, that's the irrigation project, not necessarily the public utilities and the mains coming to the irrigation project. And so that's that's really, I think, what what we're not including at this point.
Yeah. And and thank you, Rich. Really, really, sort of, this is really the Really, really, sort of, this is really the first time we've, we've done this as a city, this, this full system-wide assessment. What, one of the things that, that is clear is that not, not everything in the sys, in the system requires engineering and design. And so that, those costs were not a blanket cost. It was applied independently, item by item as, as needed. And so that was reflected in that total as Rich discussed.
Okay, and then for the, the additional unknowns or, or unallocated, I guess we'll call it. Do we have any estimate of, of what that is percentage-wise versus the total 15 million on the fours and fives?
Yeah, so, so the, so those items that were not included in the total. What we, what we do have is we have a, we have some estimates from our Parks Direct Master Plan for, for total system replacement costs, including facilities. And Rich, do you have those figures on hand?
So I can tell you that they approximately double the amount we have right now. So we have about $20,000 in one through threes, about fif, or excuse me, $20 million in one through threes, $15 million in fours and fives. And so the master plan shows the consultant-driven fees indicate that would double those numbers.
Okay, so just some understanding, d- does that make the four and five total cost then 30 million instead of 15?
So we, we explicitly excluded facilities. And so, so if you were to include facilities, yes, you would be at a, you would be at a much higher figure. And so because we didn't look at those facilities, we did not assess them as to their category, whether they're a four or a five. So we just don't have that, that information.
So we know we've got a couple out there that are, if not fours and fives, and awfully close to it, right?
In, in all likelihood, I think, yes. There are certainly elements of those facilities that would require a, a full conversation in and of themselves. Whether the, the desire of city council is to invest in those facilities or whether to completely replace those facilities is, is really a, a, a much bigger question.
And separate from, from what we're talking about tonight.
Exactly, which is why we didn't include these facilities in the, in this assessment.
Okay. I remember maybe two iterations ago with this, you had mentioned with each option, the levy, the bond and utility fee, that there were certain restrictions on the use of the money?
Yeah, so, so a, for example, a bond, a bond cannot be used for staff costs. So if we wanted to add more maintenance employees, for example, a bond could not fund that. So that's one example. A levy, however, could. A levy could be used for operating expenses. And it can also be used for capital expenses. So the levy is more flexible on how it's used. The bond is purely capital, capital improvements in replacements.
Okay. And then to, to Counselor Pratt's point, which I appreciated about, we've got a duty to, to maintain these assets. Talking about the, the threes becoming fives and that there's maintenance that lengthens out that, that timeline. But ultimately, there's nothing that can be done to stop the ones, twos and threes from becoming fours and fives in the future, right?
The, the, yeah, the, the ones, twos and threes, at some point in time in the future, they will need to be replaced. It may be 20 or 30 years or maybe even more down the road, but those will also need to be replaced at some point.
Okay, so for example, if we decided a $20 million bond was a, a good idea and to put that out to the voters in 20 years, we'd probably have to do another bond again.
So it really comes down to what, what source the community and you prefer to pursue. Some, some communities have selected to fund some of these through levies. And so, and, and sort of asking the community to renew those levies every, every so often. Other communities have funded these through high, high utility rate, higher utility rates than we presented tonight. One community in particular has a utility rate over $15 for parks on a monthly, monthly basis. And so it really comes down to your preference, the community's preference and, but yes, renewal of those sources, because those assets will continue to age. Regardless of the best efforts of, of competent staff, eventually they, they will too need to be replaced, just as our other city infrastructure, like pipes and streets and sidewalks eventually need to be replaced.
All right. So in other words, we need a long-term funding mechanism if we're going to keep up with the maintenance and replacements.
A, a, certainly if any, any infrastructure really to maintain safety and access and equity, a dedicated source is, is the best way to fund infrastructure improvements and replacements.
All right, and we do this already with, you know, the street maintenance fee that's, that's on the utility bills, right?
Correct. That's how, that's how we fund our street, our street improvements and replacements and also our storm, storm water system and water.
All right. Well, and I don't expect you to answer this question, but just, just food for thought. You know, with the roads, I think we can safely say that, that almost everybody who pays taxes uses the roads. But I don't think we can say the same thing with respect to parks. And so I would be uneasy about, you know, a blanket utility fee that, you know, if some people who are, for whatever reason, don't use parks are going to be severely, I don't even know what the right adjective or verb is, but unhappy that, you know, they're getting dinged to pay for parks that they don't use. So my, I, I think the ideal outcome for this would be that we'd look at the, the levy and put it up to the voters at an amount that, you know, is going to at least get those fives remedied sooner rather than later. And then, you know, think about how we plan for paying for the threes and fours that are coming down the pike pretty soon. But anyway, that's just my perspective. I'll let others talk now. Thank you. All right. I want to give before another question, because Beth Dittman is taking some time out of her evening. Is there anything you'd like to say, Beth, as Chair of T-Park? Might be catching her off guard.
Can we go back to faces? Rich, can you stop screen share?
Oh yes, I'm sorry.
So Beth, are you still there? I can see your picture. She might have stepped away. Other questions, we'll give her a moment. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Rich, for the information. Ross, as always, the, keeping this updated on this. What do we spend, what did we spend? And I, and I have the number someplace and I don't have it at the tip of my tongue right now, and I don't really want to go through all my notes. You know what we spent last year on maintenance for the parks, Ross?
Yeah, if we look at our operating costs for our parks maintenance, so this is the ongoing mowing, cleaning. It's, it's probably around 1.2 million.
No, what, not, not, not the maintenance. What did we spend last year in for lack of a better word, for repairs and just to fix things that needed to be fixed?
Off the top of my head, I, I, I don't recall. Rich might have a better idea. This is really Rich's body of work.
So this, this year, this.
Last year, Rich, what, what we meant last year?
Yeah, so I, I'm not sure I could tell you. Last year we received a couple hundred thousand dollars last year for a Folley Playground is one of the projects I remember.
But some of that is nested into the operating budget, Counselor. So there's the CIP money, the, the capital improvement plan money that, that gets the projects like the splash pad at Folley Park. And then there's, on top of that, we nest into the budget and the operating budget, fixing things like benches and, and signs. Although we're not going to be able to give you an exact number, I don't think.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just was looking for some, for some round, just some numbers that in, in, in general, sorry. So my problem, and I've said this before, with the utility bill, the utility bills keep going up and they keep going up, you know, you know, and they're going to continue to go up because it's part of our water bill. And we already know Portland has been giving us plenty of advance notice that there are a lot of charges coming down the road. But as I look at the, I look at the, the utility bill right now, there's a road maintenance fee, a sewer base fee, a sewer use fee, a storm drain fee, a facility charge, a service charge and a water usage consumption, which is the actual then bill. So I, I would be concerned with any utility bill. But I'm also concerned with the utility bill because of how little it does. And so for example, I think a while ago, and I have my notes, maybe Don has remembers and has some, some more, can add some more nuances. Oh, and, and before I go on with that, I do want to make a clarifying point, Ross. The, the high school field and the lights, the field is already in our, that I know is in our operating budget because we had to replace that a little bit early and Don had to do some magic with his numbers that he's very good at in moving around so that it didn't impact our budget. I believe it was two years ago. Five, I believe it's a five-year deal that basically it has to be replaced. And then the lights, I would never include the lights in anything like this because as PGE has, I believe, told us, or at least they've told me, the payback on changing, replacing those lights is less than three years and a significantly lower electric bill. So I just want to make that point and throw that out, food for thought and it'll be discussed at a later point. So on the operating levy, the, the, what I'd like to see, and I believe it was something along the lines of 50 cents. And I remember that because that was the great debate we had on the transportation bond. And what 50 cents meant in terms of being a small number and a round number. And ultimately, we didn't go that route. We went a different route. We did something a little bit lower and it gave us what we wanted and what we needed. But for this, for, and I'm assuming it's a five-year operating levy, I remember that the 50 cents, I believe, got us somewhere around 2 million. And I'm kind of guessing that per year, and I'm thinking that's right. I'm close to it because of the 25 cents getting you 1.1 or 1.2. So somewhere in that neighborhood, we're probably there. And what I think that would do for the city is it gives us then the opportunity to do the little things, take a bunch of little things on your list over the next five years totaling about $5 million. So that there's a lot being done and takes one or two of those big items on your list. Browns Ferry of the boat ramp launch comes to mind would be, you know, one of my, my favorites because of, of what it brings to the river. And then in five years, we just do, we have the opportunity to do it again if we have a good track record. And I, and I think the city, certainly staff has proven beyond a reasonable doubt, the ability to manage a bond and to manage what it's for. And Washington County has given us a, a great track record in what they've done. They have a, they don't have a utility fee for their roads. They have a, a road bond. We have the library bond. We have a couple of other bonds. And when I look at my property tax bill, which just came out, you know, I, I get upset with a large property tax bill because it's big and it keeps going up. But then when I look at it, I can't get mad at anything that's on there. There's TBFR. There's the library. There's the sheriff. I mean, so there's, it's good things. I, I think this falls under that category where that levy for parks is a good thing. And it would give us enough money to actually be making some repairs. And I think it's something that could be done. I don't see an issue with this, with, with, well, I know we like to do internal polling. I know the city likes to do some, some background work before, but we did this for the transportation bond. We started about this time of the year and by January, we were able to very comfortably know we had a really good way of passing that bond in the May election. And I, that would be my preference. And again, I'm, at this point in time, I know we're just talking about a lot of different things. And I, I know everybody's got their opinion on the way to go, but I just do not believe the utility bill besides getting a lot of people upset for, and Counselor Kellogg had another reason why someone would be upset. But a lot of people upset for a lot of different reasons and not giving us the money and the funds that we really need to start making a dent. Because I do, I do agree with a previous statement made that we have to protect our, our community parks. And we, we know from the ratings of, from the polling that the citizens of Twalton value our parks. And so that's just my two cents worth and, and my thoughts on it.
Paul? Other questions or comments for Ross or Rich? Last chance for Beth. Are you there, Beth? Valerie?
Yeah, well, you, I, I agree that the levy would, would bring us more revenue that we would need. But I'm wondering, I guess I'm not, I, I, I don't know that, I wonder if we could kind of blend things and have a small utility fee just because there's so much deferred maintenance. And I mean, how long are we going, will we be able to bring this up on like a May ballot next year? How, how soon could we have a levy passed and bring in funds would be my first question. And then I guess it's, yeah, it's, maybe there should be more than one source to take care of this because it's such a huge amount. We're doing so much catch-up here. And then my other question on the utility fee is that, well, Paul said, you know, we have fees, I, I always think of our roads, like, I, I mean, I'm so proud of our roads and the great job our city does of maintaining them. Because in the long run, we know that's a lot more cost-effective than replacing roads as they deteriorate and fall apart. And that's what we're doing with our parks right now. So I, I think we need to be open to maybe more than one funding source to play catch-up here and to get ahead of this. And so we could not be closing par, or facilities in our parks just because they're not maintained.
Bridget?
I'm with Valerie and as far as people, you know, I think thinking about resources for me, I'm kind of more of the utility fee bond person. And then in the future, thinking about levies for keeping up, but I just feel that we have a huge issue that I don't want to keep forwarding along to the next new counselor. And my thoughts around looking at the parks fee as a user fee, it doesn't fit for me because those parks, just like when we were talking about what home values are reflected by and neighborhood values are reflected by, the availability of parks increases everybody's home values, increases everybody's quality of life. And I just haven't seen, in my experience, especially with all these volunteers that have come in, the number one thing that they value is, is their parks. So I, I would like to see a mechanism like a utility fee that helps for preventing deferred maintenance. In my mind, preventing deferred maintenance is what you would want to do when you're responsible around your home to maintain your value. And the fact that we're kind of in a hole right now is a major concern and a problem. And I know we all agree on that. And that's where I kind of lean into a bond where we could do capital projects and make a dent in the front end when costs and supplies are lower, as costs always rise, are lower costs, we could do more concurrently to resolve current issues. And then in the future, I, I mean, if the funding structure, you know, when, when the bond's used up and if people want to look at the funding structure and shift it over into a levy at some point, I mean, that conversation could always hap, happen. But I have a big concern around that. And I think that But I have a big concern around that and I think that borrowing money in a bond, there's just a cost benefit analysis that where we're standing right now with our assessment of, I mean, is it $40 million of, of maintenance, not including buildings? It's a hefty lift. So trying to chip away at it. In, anyway, that, that, that's my thought, a hybridized approach. It's not a user fee, you know, it's a, it's a fee of an amenity that everyone in the city owns. And and even if someone doesn't drive a car, doesn't mean that the roads don't help get the food to the grocery store. And the same goes with the parks where we have events, where we have different things that bring attention to our city, that bring people in to gather and that help make our city healthier and in many different ways, not just green spaces, but financially as well. So that's my concern. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Bridgette. Nancy. Nancy, then Maria.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pushing the wrong button. Sorry about that. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the additional information tonight, like Counsel Kellogg was mentioning. We filled in a bunch of gaps, I think, over the last time we discussed this. I have a couple of questions, Dawn. I think this might be a you question. But when we're talking about adding the bond or adding the levy, are we going to get into like a tax compression issue with either of those? That's my first question.
Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Actually, I had two questions. So I was faking. So my second question is, since the levy is kind of a slow grow accrual of money over time and we have so many immediate capital costs, is it possible to borrow against a levy to get immediate liquid funds upfront because we have so much work to do? Those are my first two questions.
Okay, so let me address the second one first. I mean, that's kind of what the bond would be doing, would be getting the money upfront at a levy rate to, to, to pay for the capital. So I think I'm, I think that's answering that second question. The first one is bond levies are outside of compression. So anything, any rate we have in a bond is not, will not be compressed.
But a levy would be.
A local option levy would potentially be. We are, we have a fair amount of gap in the general government rate before we would get to compression in the county. But it is part of the limits and could get to that point if we got high enough.
Okay. And just to make sure I understand your, the answer. I understand the bond money, you get it upfront, but it has a lot of restrictions on how it can be spent. It's mostly capital where the levy wouldn't have the restriction. Like yes or no, can we borrow against the levy to get a pot of money upfront? Or is that sort of an aesthetic goal to what it is?
Yes, any, any kind of upfront money would be able to get would be for capital only. We would not be able to borrow to that extent for operating.
Okay. Okay, thank you. You know, to, to go along with Counsel Pratt, I do think we need to have sort of a multi-layered approach in funding. And I think that it is appropriate to look at adding a small amount in a utility fee every month, in addition to some of these other solutions. I mean, people are going to be, whether you use the park or not, or you consider it an amenity and, or not, I mean, you're going to be making, as a Twelton resident, you're going to be making contribution to parks, whether it's through utility fee, a levy or a bond. I mean, one way or the other, you're making contributions. So and knowing that the parks and the green spaces always have such enormous support when we do all of our community research, I don't have a problem in suggesting any of that. So I would be open to doing some sort of a utility fee, bond or levy combo. And then I also want to point this out. I think we may have discussed this before, but regardless, looking at a lot of the fours and fives, it almost leads me to sort of a DEI discussion to some degree. Because when you look at the areas that look like they have some of the most severe fours and fives, I mean, they're all in, a lot of them are in certain parks in certain areas. And that just doesn't really sit well with me. So I would like to see, as we raise funds, I would like to see some of these the affality conditions and the Stone Ridge conditions. I'd like to see them get pushed higher on the list just because I think that those two parks should be every bit as nice as Iback Park. And there shouldn't be any reason that, you know, we don't even have a decent fence around one little park or decent pavement where, you know, we have some of these beautiful amenities and some of the other parks that we have. So regardless of how we fund it, I would like to see those things, you know, elevated to the higher up on the list, just because I think that equity is equity and fair is fair and that needs some attention. That's me.
Maria?
Hi, everyone. So I've, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm really debating this because we just heard in the other presentation, families that are struggling to pay their rent and to pay their bills. And, and here we are thinking about a utility tax or utility bill fee or a bond. Or it's like, we, we forget quickly when we move to another topic. And and just a lot of this stuff is going to go down to these families, whether it's a utility bill or whatever it is that we're imposing some kind of property tax. It's going to come down to, say, eventually the, the renter or other families that are paying, that were trying to keep them in their home. And I mean, I'm, I'm trying to continue to pay my, my home. So if I'm going to, I just saw my tax bill and I saw all these things that, that were, it was like $4,800 and I'm thinking, wow. I, I'm not saying I don't want to contribute, but there are certain things I don't really use at all or have anything to do with me. But hey, it's part of that. But still, it keeps going up every year. So my question is, are there, is there anything that it's going to be removed that we're finally paying off that was from, that people can say, okay, it's going to come out of your tax bill because we're done paying that. And then now we can move forward with the next thing, which is the parks with the bond or, or, I mean, it's just, I just wonder, do we, does it continue going up or is there a point that we say, okay, we're done with this? And now it's time to, to find us something else. So I just, I just feel like we just, we, I don't know, that's where the bond thing kind of makes me think of all those. Oh, the taxes, property taxes makes me think of all these families that are going to continue paying for, it's just going to roll down to them because they live in the apartment complex where they pay a monthly bill. And then the water bill, it just goes to the, it just gets divided by, say, 20 people, 20 houses, 20 homes or apartment complex. So I just don't know if we, I feel like, I think it's important, the parks are important and we all utilize them. So definitely we got to be, whatever direction I support a utility bill fee, obviously. I've said that before and I don't know if we want to do this, I don't know, add more taxes to the properties, whether it's a levy or a bond. I do support the utility bill and I feel like I know it's not a lot, but at least try to fix what we have, like the fives and the fours that you were talking about. Or go straight and get a big, get a big chunk of money and then hold off to the utility bill. And once we get the chunk of money, can we maintenance later on? Add, I mean, like, I don't want to do both at the same time. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I don't want to do a bond and a utility bill at the same time. I feel like we got to do one thing and then continue finding sources to, to finance or maintenance. But having two things at the same time, a utility bill and a bond, or whether a utility bill and a levy, seems like a big hit, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Anyone else? I think that's everybody. Obviously, we're not deciding this tonight. This is work session. So this is more, this is an information item where I foresee we're going to have to put on the, you know, city council agenda, a discussion of how to fund the solving, how to solve the funding issue here. Is it one thing, is it two things, is it three things? So we, we don't need to make a decision tonight, but we do need Cheryl and staff to get this on the calendar for a future date for more in-depth discussions since we only have 15 minutes left. But now it's in our heads of the three options we have out there. You have an idea of the different assessment levels, what they'll bring in so that we can have the next discussion on how to address this issue, be it through one item or a combination of items. I just want to remind folks that we did have a lot of research done earlier this year about how well a levy would be received in the community and it wasn't that well. So that we have some homework on that to do is if some of us want to go out to the community and ask for a levy, we need to refine our message. We need to listen to what we were told from the consultants on showing the value to the community of paying into a levy and what the return will be to them in their parks. But I think we have a little bit more homework to do before we have to make a decision. But I certainly do appreciate Rich and Ross giving us an idea of how this, how big this basket is and how we need to address some of the issues in the parks and figure out how we're going to pay for it because obviously general operation funds aren't doing it. Need some short-term and long-term strategies on funding this. And I don't want to kick the can down the road as I think someone said before to another council, too far. But I certainly want to have to get this on the calendar so that we can start talking about this and make a decision. What happens here in November with a slew of bond measures that are on the ballot to see how those fare in other communities and get a temperature reading of the community on this issue with, you know, based on some of the things we, lessons learned from the research done, what, early in May, I believe? We were thinking about putting this on the May ballot. So I think it was earlier than that in the year. So.
You could, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
You could give us direction to bring something back, a utility fee back with a specific amount. So it doesn't have to be further discussion at, at a meeting. I mean, it would be further discussion in a meeting, but you could give direction tonight on, on, on a utility fee. But I just.
All right.
That was, that was going to be my comment too. I, I felt like there was support for utility fee.
All right. So with that, I mean, because we're 13 minutes here, we don't have a lot of time to discuss it. It sounds like Paul was not really a favorite. So what are people's suggestions?
I, mine would be for either the $5 or the $2 to start with.
All right.
And that would give it room.
Okay, others?
Maria here. Yeah, between two and five, I think. And, and it was, I think the survey was like in a late February this year, if you all recall.
Valerie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the five. So I think if we looked at two and five, that would give us a good start.
All right. Council President Grimes? She's $5 foot long? All right. Who am I missing? Mr. Kellogg?
Yeah, I, you know, I understand that we, we have a duty to, to maintain these assets, but I, I still think that getting the funding through a public vote is a better approach than imposing it by fiat. And if the levy doesn't work or a bond doesn't work and we've got to do something, then there's still an option. But my preference would be to go to the voters.
All right. Council Morrison?
Asked and answered.
All right. I'd be open to discussing directing staff to prepare something like, yeah, $2 or $5, no more than $5 for us to discuss and have public input on through the city council meeting to present that and see what the dollars would be and that give residents the ability to give us their feedback on it. That this will be on the city council agenda rather than a work session item.
Yeah, I have a question, but Nancy had her hand up first. Go ahead, Nancy.
I have my finger up there. And I don't know, this is sort of, I don't even know if this is. Is there a way, because I know, Maria, I hear what you're saying about, like, we just had this discussion about the cost of housing, the cost of staying in housing, the cost of getting in housing. And, you know, it is a real hardship. It's very expensive right now for everybody for everything. And, you know, we want to protect residents and it's like kind of ironic in a way that we're having to have this discussion right now in the midst of COVID and everything else going on. But is there a way on the utility fees where we could do like a home value cutoff or an income cutoff or something like that where we could apply the utility fee, but we could give a certain portion of the population like a pass on, on the fee being added to the utility bills based on either household income or home value or something like that so that we could give people a break that are in the hardest hit, you know, what it is, the squished middle or whatever they're calling it these days. Like, is there some way that we could do that? I mean, obviously it would impact the amount of money we'd be able to raise. But is that a possibility or does it, the fee have to be an all or nothing situation?
I'm looking at Dawn.
Well, I, there are probably ways to do it. I would have to look into that. I would also want to get feedback from Sean Brady on how, the legalities of it and the ordinance, how we'd write that. The, the difficulties potentially on that as well as staffing and how do we administer that kind of a program to do the, the analysis of income levels and so forth. That would be one of my concerns as well. Could it be done? I would say probably, but there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. Wouldn't there be an issue if the meter is at the apartment building? You know, the meter, that is, you know, that's basically the landlord's paying that. And you, you know, that'd be tough to differentiate the, who's paying what when you get to a meter that's owned by a landlord.
Yeah, so we do run, because most, I think all of our apartment complexes are a single meter. The landlord pays it and then they determine how to allocate it out to the residents. That is one of the issues we're running into with the utility assistance program is the, some of the people that are in apartments who really need it, how do you determine that? And they're not eligible for that program. So yes, it does create other, other, other problems as well.
Right. And was it Bridgette or Valerie who had their hand up?
Oh, it was me, but Dawn answered the question that I had as far as doing vouchers on the backend. But I also think it's important to understand that there is, it is a lower fee with shared housing to start. But I also think it's important to understand that there is, it is a lower fee, um, with shared housing to start with. And, and I do want to say too, that I do appreciate people's concerns about, um. People struggling right now. I feel the same way as well. And then at the same time, I would hate to see someone who's struggling trip on a tripping hazard in our park. Um, and have more complicated problems, um. Because of the deferred maintenance and, and things like that. I also think that keeping up with assets does help everybody, um, in a community. And, um, I know it's a further out thought than just when you get your bill and you read it. So I do appreciate that. Um, but those were, that was my, my question was really about the utility fee, but, um, relief rather than doing it on the front end.
All right. So we only got a few minutes left here. So I'm seeing it's basically, we have five folks who are okay. The rectory staff that bring something back with a, uh, utility fee ranging somewhere between two to five dollars per month, per meter.
We will schedule that on the calendar before, before the end of the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you all on this one. Thank you, Ross and Rich. Uh, okay, so that's it for. The first three items, we're going to, we're running out of time for council communications. So we'll punt council communications to the end of city council meeting. Uh, so tonight's consent agenda, anyway, have any questions on the consent agenda tonight? All right. Uh, we've got two proclamations, red ribbon and veterans. I'm going to grab veterans right away and I'm assuming Paul wants to do red ribbon.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Uh, and then I think that's it. Anything else that I'm missing for tonight? All right. So we have a five-minute break. We'll reconvene with the city council meeting at seven o'clock. We'll see you in about five minutes.